Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call the order of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. And tonight, we'll be led first in prayer by our Commissioner Turner, and then Commissioner Gooch will lead us into pledge, please.
Let's pray. Father, it is good to be here again, Lord, and we're thankful for the opportunity that you've afforded each one of us, Lord, to be citizens of this great country. And we take our responsibility serious, Lord, as witnessed by those who are here tonight, both elected and those in the audience who value what goes on in their community, and we value their input, Lord. We're thankful for those like James Baker, Lord, who's passed away but left an indelible mark on our community, and we just ask that you be with his family this evening, Lord, as they're still dealing with the grief of losing someone like that. But we're thankful for what he contributed in his involvement in our community and left a better Rutherford County for his family and friends. Be with us tonight, Lord, as we discuss important business of the people. Just allow us to be clear in our thoughts and our words, Lord, that they both may honor you with our actions and our deeds, and we'll bring you glory tonight as we serve our community. I ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
(inaudible)
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
President.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan. Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sereno.
Yes.
We have a quorum with nineteen present.
All right, thank you very much. You have received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, and Commissioner Phillips, what are your findings?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order and move that they be approved.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Cook, anyone have any corrections or additions that you identified? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, first, on our agenda is a resolution of sympathy on behalf of Ernest Ernie King-Johns. Commissioner Stevens, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that this is a great honor to read this resolution on behalf of Ernie Johns. He was a great friend, a great community member in Smyrna, an excellent historian, and I think that everybody would agree that this resolution is in order. So it's a resolution of sympathy. Whereas, it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Ernest Ernie King-Johns, a former Rutherford County Commissioner who served two terms from 1990 to 1998 and a friend of many. And whereas, Ernie Johns was born in Rutherford County and graduated from Smyrna High School in 1952. And whereas, he graduated from the University of Tennessee in 1956 with a degree in geology and proudly served his country as a member of the United States Air Force. And whereas, Mr. Johns was married to Mary Lou Johns for 57 years and had two children, Gregory Johns and Keith Johns. And whereas, he was heavily involved throughout Rutherford County as a businessman, a leader in civic organizations such as the Lions Club, and a tireless advocate for promoting local history. And whereas, Mr. Johns was a founding member of the Rutherford County Historical Society and previously served as its president. And whereas, Mr. Johns contributed many scholarly articles to historical publications, including the Historical Society's monthly publication, Frodships, in addition to helping lead local efforts to locate and preserve Rutherford County cemeteries by co-authoring several books. And whereas, Ernie Johns ably and selflessly served as Rutherford County's historian from 1982 until his retirement. And whereas, we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this fourteenth day of April 2016 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Ernest Ernie King-Johns, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Johns by the clerk of this legislative body. And Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval.
Phillips, Schaefer, and others, and many of you, thank you very much, Commissioner. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Thank you very much, and again, we do appreciate so much the service that Mr. Johns gave to this county and this commission over many, many years. Let's see, next, we have a couple resolutions regarding our National Park System, and in the absence of Commissioner Kaplan, Commissioner Turner is going to be reading both of those to us at this moment. So the first is a resolution to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the National Park System and the modern National Park System.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not sure if there's anyone here in the audience that's representing the park system, Mr. Bay. If you'd like to come up, please, and I know Mr. Mike Lyles has been heavily involved with this as a former county commissioner, state representative, obviously his heart's in his community, so if they'll come up here to the front, we'd be most gracious. The resolution to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the National Park System and the modern National Park System. Whereas, established by Congress in 1872, Yellowstone National Park was the first national park in the United States, and is also widely held to be the first national park in the world. Whereas, Chicagamar and Chattanooga National Military Park was the first battlefield set aside by the federal government in 1890 and was managed by the War Department. And whereas, the National Park Service Organic Act was signed into law by President Woodrow Wilson on August 25, 1916. Whereas, this act remains a preeminent law guiding the management of parks and articulating the core mission of the National Park Service: to conserve the scenery and the natural and historic objects and the wildlife therein, and to provide for the enjoyment of the same in such manner and by such means as will leave them unimpaired for the enjoyment of future generations. Whereas, for 100 years, the National Park Service has administered the great national parks and monuments in the United States as a unified National Park System. Whereas, from 1916 to the present, the National Park System has grown from 37 park units with 6 million acres of land in the western United States to more than 395 units with 84 million acres of land in nearly every state and territory. Whereas, the 100th anniversary of the National Park Service in 2016 is an occasion to celebrate a century of American vision and achievement in identifying and preserving the special places in the United States for the benefit of all, and the culmination of 100 years of accomplishments by the employees, partners, and volunteers of the National Park Service. Whereas, 2016 also marks the beginning of the second century of service of the dedicated employees, partners, and volunteers of the National Park Service to the people of the United States as environmental leaders and vigilant stewards of the treasured places and stories of the United States. Whereas, one of the 11 National Park Units in the state of Tennessee, Stones River National Military Park, was created by law in 1927 and was initially managed by the War Department. Whereas, in 1913, the military parks, including Stones River National Military Park, were transferred to the National Park Service through an executive order issued by Franklin D. Roosevelt, President, and since renamed, Stones River National Battlefield is dedicated to the history of a major Civil War battle that took place on the outskirts of Murfreesboro in Rutherford County, Tennessee, from December 31, 1862, to January 2, 1863. Whereas, Stones River National Battlefield plays an integral part in telling the story of Murfreesboro in Rutherford County, and more than 300,000 people visit the park each year. Whereas, national parks are the touchstones of our shared history and culture, conveying majestic landscapes that embody the American spirit, and the centennial of the National Park Service should be celebrated by this body. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we commemorate the 100th anniversary of the National Park Service and the modern unified National Park System, and encourage all Rutherford County citizens to visit one of our 11 Tennessee National Parks, or one of the nearly 400 national parks in other states, to experience not only the most splendid examples of America's unsurpassed natural and scenic heritage, but also the special places, artifacts, and stories of our nation's birth, our struggles and triumphs as a people, and the shared values that now unite us. Resolved this fourteenth day of April 2016, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for its approval.
Commissioner Sereno, a second. All right, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Please say aye, sorry. Mr. Lyles, if you'd like to come up and speak, I know that this is something that's been very passionate to you, and I know Commissioner Kaplan would like for one of you to be able to speak for a few minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. We have with us a special guest tonight, Joyceene Low from Atlanta. She's an acting superintendent in the absence of a permanent superintendent, which will be here the 1st of May. So we want to welcome her and show her the hospitality we have here in middle Tennessee. But also, we're here also tonight to celebrate the career of one of the Rangers who went on to be the operations manager, chief of operations, Gibb Backlin, and I think there's a resolution for him, too.
This is not Mr. Lyles' first rodeo, as you can tell, so we've got a resolution here for Mr. Backlin. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this fourteenth day of April 2016 that we hereby extend sincere appreciation to Gilbert J. Gibb Backlin for his dedicated service to Rutherford County and the National Park Service, and wish him much success and happiness in all his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to Mr. Backlin by the clerk of this legislative body. Resolved this fourteenth day of April 2016, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for its approval.
Second, Commissioner Kusch. All of you in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you, all of you that have led our park system. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Turner, for reading those resolutions. We don't have anyone that wishes to make a public comment tonight, so we can go right along into elections and confirmations, and we'll still have Commissioner Turner before us.
We're just going to continue the Commissioner Turner Show, if you guys will just bear with me here. Commissioners, on your iPad, you'll find in front of you a list of notaries for you to review, and, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Allen. All of you in favor of approving those notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And then finally, these never seem to get easy or easier, but Steering would like to announce a vacancy on the Industrial Development Board and Health and Education and Facilities Board to fill the unexpired term of Mr. James O. Baker. The term is to expire in August 2019, and, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
And applications should be made to the Steering Committee for its meeting that's upcoming on May the 2nd. I know that you guys can't hear me, but we're just going... So it's going off again, Mr. Robertson, but the audience may can hear, but I'm sure we're not going live across... Let's take just a moment here, let's see. They haven't issued the chapter number yet. It's just a technicality, they all signed the papers, but... Go back on, excuse me. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we can proceed, it appears. Somebody knew which button to push. The podium mic is, if you don't touch that, it would help us. It appears that is causing some sort of short. Okay, so we apologize for that, but we can move right along. We're ready for the Commissioner Phillips. We have the resolution to approve the consent agenda, next on our agenda here.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've also reviewed the consent agenda, find all that the items that are on there are appropriate, and barring any Commissioner wishing to remove any item, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
All right, and a second from Commissioner Jordan. Okay, does anyone have anything they'd like to have removed from that consent agenda? Now's your opportunity. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, then, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, record the votes, please.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. There is no unfinished business. We're ready, then, to start on our reports by standing committees. Commissioner Jordan, for our budget committee.
I'll try not to touch this microphone. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I want to say happy birthday to Commissioner Dodd. It starts to think we ought to sing to him, but we just let that slide. It had to be the mayor to get something happy birthday to, I guess. We have a resolution, general fund budget amendment... Sorry, I've got my notes in the wrong place. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows: county mayor, increased expenditures for legal services $25,000, and decreased mon- assigned fund balance $25,000. Resolved this fourteenth day of April 2016. Mr. Mayor, I so approve, I so move.
Commissioner Piercy, a second. Anyone have any questions regarding that? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Nineteen yes, motion passes. I apologize, Mayor, I already...
Record the votes, I couldn't see that everyone had voted, but... So nineteen yes, no, nos. All right, continue on, then, sir, with...
Item N1B, medical stop-loss premium rate effective July 1, 2016. Resolution, whereas the current stop-loss coverage on Rutherford County's medical plan is $750,000 per covered member, and whereas Cigna has proposed to renew the stop-loss coverage at the same pooling level, with the monthly rate remaining the same as the current rate at $7.21 per employee for a total annual premium of $441,685. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute all required documents far and on behalf of Rutherford County to renew the stop-loss coverage on Rutherford County's medical plan, with the pooling level to remain the same at $750,000 per covered member, with a monthly rate of $7.21 per employee, with a total annual premium of $441,685, effective July 1, 2016. Resolved this fourteenth day of April 2016. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Commissioner Johnson, a second. Any questions or discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Right, record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item N1C, dental rates effective January 1, 2017. Resolution, whereas in order to ensure the solvency of the dental plan and the future claims of the plan have been estimated, and whereas utilization has increased, especially in the option-one buy-up plan, and a premium increase is needed. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the premium rates for the dental plan are adopted for the 2017 calendar year according to the schedule attached heretofus Exhibit 1 incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this fourteenth day of April 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Allen. Any discussion, questions? Otherwise, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item N1D, vision rates effective January 1, 2017. Whereas the premium rates per month for vision coverage for Rutherford for calendar year 2017 to be 100% employee-paid or individual, $6.98; employee-slash-spouse, $14.66; employee-slash-child, $12.92; or employee-slash-family, $20.25. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that vision plan, that vision coverage premium rates are adopted as outlined in the foregoing resolution for the 2017 calendar year. Resolved this fourteenth day of April 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Kusch and Allen. Any discussion? Commissioner P.
I actually should have done this on the last one, too, on the, well, let's see, the dental, the vision, and also the health insurance. Read a conflict of interest. Because my wife is an employee of Rutherford County Board of Education, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Thank you, sir.
Because I retired from Rutherford County School System, I have a conflict of interest about the proposal to be voted, and however, my argument and my answer, only my consent to my obligation to my constituents and to the citizens of this body represent.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodd.
Mr. Chairman, because of my wife is an employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that argument in my vote, and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this county. And I thank Mr. P. for reminding us all to adhere to this.
All right, thank you very much. All right, then, if we're ready to vote on this, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item N1E, health insurance premium rates for the active employees and retirees effective January 1, 2017. Resolution, whereas in an effort to generate sufficient revenue to cover the claims cost in the employee insurance fund, two options were presented to the insurance committee for consideration as the health insurance premium rates for the active employees and retirees effective January 1, 2017, and option two was selected. And whereas those options were forwarded to the Budget Finance Investment Committee for considerations, the county commission, and option two was selected by the Budget Finance and Investment Committee. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that option two is set forth in this schedule attached heretofus Exhibit 1 incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim be adopted as the health insurance premium rates for the active employees and retirees effective January 1, 2017. Resolved this fourteenth day of April 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, from Commissioner Sereno and others. Discussion, Commissioner Schaefer.
My wife is a retired employee of the Rutherford County Board of Education, and our secondary insurance is the county insurance at the present time anyhow, and so I guess I have to say there's a conflict of interest here, but I will vote my conscience unless I don't have to vote. And that is my question, if I abstain, does that count against, or is it just a simple majority all we need?
It's a simple majority. All right, let's see. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Could you summarize if there's an increase in premium and how much it's costing the county and how much it's costing the employees?
I think it would be wise if this group would consent to let Mrs. Street answer that question more appropriately than I could. Would that be okay without objection? Would you let her come forward and make those comments? Ms. Street?
You'll get a lot better answers out of her.
So the two proposals that we took before the committee represented a 6% increase across the board to the total necessary budget that is needed to properly fund our self-funded claims during the upcoming fiscal year. Rather than do a 6% across the board for all actives and retirees, we looked at the actual claims utilization within each of the plans that we have within Rutherford County, that being our co-pay, our deductible plan, and our HRA plan. And we also looked at the Medicare Supplemental Plan, that would be for anyone over the age of 65 that is a retiree on our plan. As you know, we've had two goals within the county over the last several years that have been implemented. One of those is to blend the pre-65 claims activity with the active employees activity, and therefore have one rate for both pre-65 and active employees. And then the Medicare Supplement rates are separate from that and based upon their actual claims experience. We looked at what the utilization and claims experience were, and we made the recommendation as option two that we should actually apply a heavier increase to the plan option that was seeing the greatest volume of claims, and in some regard, some adverse selection against it. So the recommendation that went before the committee was to actually do the county contribution at 1% less per year, to take the necessary increase but apply it at various percentages, those being at 4% increase for the co-pay plan, 13.8% increase for the deductible plan, and a 2% increase for the HRA and the post-65 retirees. To the county, it has a net impact. It's a 6% increase overall from last year's budget, from this current year's budget to next year's budget from a calendar year perspective. But what it does is that it just places a higher premium increase on those particular, on the particular plan and those individuals that choose to participate in the deductible
Thank you, that explains it, but just one quick follow-up. From a percentage perspective, county's paying what percent? Employees are paying what percent? We went through this several years ago, trying to reach a certain goal. That's my question. Where are we?
Yes, sir. So right now, we retained a 90% county contribution for employees only within the co-pay and deductible plan, and on the HRA plan for employees only, we pay 100%. Within the co-pay and deductible plan for all three other remaining tiers, which is employee-plus spouse, employee-plus children, and employee-plus family, we're at 84%, with the ultimate goal of arriving at 80%. In our HRA plan, we are at a 95% contribution on employee-plus child, or employee-plus spouse, a 96% contribution on employee-plus child, and a 94% contribution. Next year, we will be evaluating as part of our premium review whether or not to take an additional decrease on that. We currently have 44% of all of our population participating in that plan. It has both great premiums and great benefits and great return on the premium investment for the employees. So we don't want to discourage them by having those premiums become so high that potentially they start to move into other plans that we know cost more for both them and the county. So we have four years left until we arrive at the goal, and it's a 1% reduction per year.
So four years away, four years away from reaching that goal?
Yes, sir.
And we're working toward it.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions for Mrs. Street? Okay, thank you very much for a very concise response to those difficult questions. Mr. Jordan, let's see now, we have, we have an act to put this on the, sir? I don't think, do I have a, did I have a motion on this already, Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Okay, so we're ready to vote. I just hadn't said, please cast your votes. All right, so then, for no more questions, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay. Okay. Record the votes, please.
Eighteen yes, one no, one abstain. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:30, and that's the time that we have set aside each meeting for our public hearings. And tonight, we do have three public hearings. And the first one is a rezoning request 16-AZA5. On behalf of Will Jordan, located along Lebanon Pike, existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of about 10 acres. Commissioner Demossi, tell us a bit more about that.
Mr. Mayor, before we get to that, I would just like to say I'm going to go sit in the audience and abstain from any conversation or anything having to do with this application whatsoever.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's appropriate. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. This first piece of property is located along Lebanon Pike. The applicant would like to rezone this property to commercial services for the eventual use as a mini warehouse facility. Now, in a commercial services district, mini warehouses are only permitted by special exception. So even if this application is approved tonight, and that's ultimately the use that is proposed for this site, they will have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception at that time. The applicant is aware of the process and what has to be done for that. Access to the property, of course, would be from Lebanon Pike. Mini warehouses typically don't have the same type of traffic volume that other commercial uses have. So that being said, we will still study the site plan to determine whether any traffic improvements just to get into the site would be warranted at the time we would see a site plan. Landscaping would require a Type 2 buffer adjacent to all residentially zoned property. The Board of Commissioners, you will recall, you recently approved some amendments to the zoning ordinance in regards to mini warehouse facilities, being able to use the backs of the building as part of the visual screen. They can be dressed up, in a sense, to be part of the buffer, and the plantings wouldn't have to be quite as substantial if they chose to do that. That is something, again, that if this comes before the, if this approval comes before the Planning Commission for site plan approval after the Board of Zoning Appeals, we would expect to see a design of that manner. Regarding the public hearing, there were, there was, I believe, just one person who spoke in opposition to the request. Their comments did concern potential uses of the property was not develop as many warehouses as commercial services does allow for a wider range of uses, property values, traffic concerns, and also whether or not this was considered spot zoning. They also questioned whether the rezoning was in the best interest of the community. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission didn't have very much deliberation on this application, and ultimately recommended approval by a unanimous vote with one abstention. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions, or Mr. Demossi while he's here? Mr. Schaefer.
It's basically across the street. I think there's a property in between it, but, yes, it's basically across the street.
The other questions are discussion. All right, Mr. Demossi, then, if you would step aside just for a moment. We're going to call this rezoning request 16-A005. We're going to now open this for a public hearing, and if there are any in the audience that wish to speak for or against this request, now is your opportunity to come forward, give us your name and address and make your comments, please. Speak into the mic so they can hear.
My name is Whitney Rocky. I am here for Matt and Maxine Henderson. They reside at 4767 Lebanon Pike. That is right next door to the property in question. I would request that you decline Mr. Jordan's application for many reasons. And this was, I previously expressed this at the Planning Commission last month, and so I'll just echo my points again. Now, the Hendersons, let me tell you a little bit about them. They purchased this house, it's over 6,000 square feet in 1998. So it's close to 20 years that they've owned this house. They have made expensive, very expensive renovations to this property, including installing an elevator in this house. So this would be at an economical disadvantage by having mini warehouses right next door. Now, regardless of any arguments that you may hear tonight or in the future, nobody wants to live right next door to mini warehouses. It's not going to increase your property values, period. Now, I would say that this is spot zoning. The comprehensive plan of Lebanon Pike, where the Hendersons live and where this location is to be is residential. Now, to spot zone it commercial, that goes against the comprehensive plan of doing this residential. There is a purpose for it being residential. Now, Mr. Jordan's application, obviously, this is a cash cow for him. It's beneficial for him, detrimental to the neighbors, and to the community at large. Again, as you've heard, this is across the street from the landfill. I don't think the Hendersons want to be right next door to mini warehouses as well. Now, there's also, I've looked, and there is self-storage business located at 851 East Jefferson Pike. That is a little less than two miles away. So as for, you know, is this, is this a reasonable request for a business, too many warehouses to be in such close proximity to each other? I would say not. It doesn't bear a reasonable relation to the public health, morals, safety, or welfare of the community. Now, there's also other many issues whenever it comes to mini warehouses, depending on the hours. Again, this is in a residential zone. So will there be customers coming after hours during the middle of the night? Will there be any crimes committed on these, on this property? Robberies, burglaries, theft? Will anybody rent a mini warehouse for illegal purposes, for the purpose of drugs, holding guns, any elite stolen merchandise, things of that nature? Will there be any homeless people around them? In the event of a fire, what's to happen when it's closed? Will there be access to emergency vehicles? Will the lights be on 24/7? These are the types of questions that you would want to ask yourself if you put yourself in place of the Hendersons, who would be right next door. Right now, it might be mini warehouses, but what, what would it be in the future? What if it closes down? What would be put there in its place? So for these reasons, amongst many others, I'd request that you decline Mr. Jordan's application.
All right, thank you. Are there others that wish to speak? If so, now is your opportunity to come forward and make your statements. Thank you. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
Hello, my name's Clyde Roundtree. I'm with Huddleston Steel Engineering. My address is 228 Bluegrass Circle, and I'm here asking for you to approve this rezoning. And I want to walk through several little reasons, and I appreciate Ms. Rockney's, I appreciate what she had to say, and I know there's always concerns with any kind of development around your home, so we want to be respectful of that. But as far as the site's concerned, it is located within the general urban character area, which is identified as an appropriate use for this particular area. Lebanon Pike's considered an urban corridor with over 16,000 people a day passing through this area in front of the site. And now, the question is always with zoning is, okay, so it's not many storage, and what is it? And the fact of the matter is, is we did some analysis, and let's just say, not the fact of the matter, but more appropriately, to think this can be residential use is kind of far-fetched. We did some analysis and said, at the most part, there'd be 10 to 15 homes on this particular site if it were to be developed. There's no sewer available. It's not, it's not, it's not the right size for a step system, so it would basically be septic homes on one-acre lots. And then those homes would somewhere be priced between $250,000 and $300,000 if it were to become homes. And unlike some other subdivisions that are in the area, they don't front the landfill. So now someone's paying between $250,000 and $300,000 to basically come out of their neighborhood and see the landfill in front of them. So I think residential use is really becoming more of a far-fetched application for this particular site. What about if it went into multifamily? If it went to multifamily, which is a rezoning change, it could have up to 160 apartments, and if we asked the adjacent landholders if they'd rather it be multifamily or storage, most people would defer to, they think storage is more appropriate. So I think Mr. Jordan's in a position where, well, what can we do with the land? You know, what is the highest and best use for that piece of property? As far as mini storage is concerned, it's in demand. You may be someone who has mini storage. I am someone who has mini storage. One in eight Americans do have mini storage. If you look at the mini storage units that are in the region, most of them are full. A lot of them have waiting lists. So it's, it's a product that's in demand. Secondly, as far as a commercial application, granted, it has some, it has some, some potential feelings related to it, but it's really a low, it's a low-impact commercial use. It's the lowest-impact commercial use on traffic. It's also the lowest-impact commercial use on school systems. So as far as that's concerned, you're, you're looking at a piece of property that's going to have six to seven cars in and out of it a day. I have a storage unit. I haven't been there in months. Most people do not go back in months. Most people forget what they have in their storage units. So the fact of the matter is fairly low impact. And Mr. Jordan's, basically, we haven't done a site plan at this point, but the design he would like to implement would be what they call the barricade-style type of mini storage, which means your exterior walls are masonry. So all the activity related to mini storage is internal to the site. So what, what the adjacent neighbors would see is they see a masonry wall, they would see landscaping against that masonry wall, and as far as what goes on internally, they would have no, really no impact, lighting-wise, noise-wise, activity-wise. As far as the concerns of what happens inside the actual unit, that's really up to the developer, the owner of the property, to make sure that they run a clean operation. I do know there's mini storage, and if you look down the street, if you look at some that are not fully occupied, typically it's a result of how they're managed. They're, they're poorly managed, it has a bad reputation, what have you, but if they're well-managed, they're actually a great asset to the community, and they're well, they're well-needed. So with that in mind, you know, I would ask for you all to approve this zoning, for Mr. Jordan, for this to be as mini storage as, with mention, we're going to have to go through BZA, where the site plan will be approved, and have to go through that process. But I have to ask, if it's not this, then what will it be? And we believe this is an appropriate use for the piece of property. Thank you very much. I'm available for questions if you have any as well.
David, thank you. I don't see that anyone is rising for a question. Is there someone else that wishes to speak regarding this application? Okay, I don't see anyone else coming forward, then therefore we're going to close this public hearing. And Mr. Schaefer, do you have a question or a motion?
Yes, can we ask Mr. Demossi another question or so?
Yes, we could.
Could I? I guess is a better way to put it. Well, I'll tell you. I live in Laverne, almost into Davidson County or almost into Percy Priests. I have kids that have played soccer in the path. Is that Segal Complex commercial, or is it something else?
I believe, now, that's, of course, in the city of Murfreesboro. I believe that zone, they have a zone called Park, and I believe it's zoned that, if I remember correctly.
Even though I got to pay to go in there for all these tournaments, right? Okay. The next thing, what is right across Cherry Lane on that corner?
That's, that's actually, if you look at your map, you'll see the, those properties right across the street from, like you said, from Cherry Lane along Lebanon Pike. Those are also in the city limits of Murfreesboro. Those are both zoned what's called commercial fringe in the city, which is similar to what our commercial services zone, which is what they're asking for. So it's not, I mean, I wouldn't say it's an apples-to-apples comparison, but they have three commercial classifications, kind of like we do, and this would be their middle-of-the-road one, like commercial services is our middle-of-the-road.
One more.
Sir?
TSU has a facility right across the road from this area, right?
Yes.
Is that educational, commercial?
Well, I believe that, most of that property is zoned for, like directly across the street, zoned RM, the same zoning that the property is zoned. But immediately to the south, you'll notice on the map, it's zoned IN, which is institutional. That's the VA property.
Any other questions? All right, we don't have a motion on the floor here, so we had the public hearing. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I move for approval with all staff conditions and comments.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kusch. Discussion, Commissioner Baum.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment or two. This is in my district. I'm going to oppose this. There's at least one couple that borders this property that's fairly strongly in opposition to this. It's Mr. and Ms. Henderson. I met them for the first time going door-to-door campaigning in the summer of 2014. Their concern is that the property is currently zoned residential, and all the properties surrounding it is also zoned residential, and it would be right up, it would be the property right beside their house. And for this reason, I feel like it's not consistent with the properties in the surrounding area. Now, you can see the landfill in the distance, but if anything, I think that hurts the case to rezone this property, because I feel like the county's already done so much to the residents out there that they've got to smell the landfill, and I hate to do anything else to them to devalue the, the values of their properties. And it's also important to me to be consistent with my votes on these rezonings and to treat our residents consistently and equally and fairly. I have voted against rezonings just like this one fairly recently. One, a couple of years ago, involved Valley Growers. They wanted to put a nursery in front of the, in front of the Brandywood and Idlewood neighborhoods, and the neighbors were opposed to that. It was zoned residential, and it would have been zoned away from residential. I voted against it, and the county commission did too, and Valley Growers had to move somewhere else. Last year, a piece of property on Sulfur Springs was asked to be rezoned from residential so that a cabinet shop could be put on that piece of property. It was right next to another, it was right next to a house. The Stricklands live there, and I voted against that rezoning because it would be on the property right next to the Stricklands, and the commission did turn that one down as well. And then just a quick third example. Earlier, last year, I guess it was last year, on Gresham Lane, in between two neighborhoods, there was a petition to rezone a residential piece of property so that an overflow carlot could, could be placed in between two neighborhoods. I think these were going to be overflow cars from a Toyota or Honda dealer in town, and I voted against that one, too. In that case, the commission actually did approve the rezoning 11 to 10. But it's just important to me to treat all these cases consistently. All the cases that I've just recited for you involve rezonings from residential, and they're all on fairly busy streets, Sulfur Springs, 96, Gresham Lane. This is similar to that, but it all involves a rezoning that would impact neighbors that have houses, and if the property has been zoned residential and the surrounding properties are residential, then I'm just concerned that it's not consistent with the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Commissioner Gurley.
I'd just like to make one or two comments. Of course, the property is across from the landfill. To me, that, from a residential development standpoint, hurts it. If you drive out 231 going from Broad Street, if you've lived here very long, you notice it's just gone, you know, progressively, progressively, progressively commercial. I mean, this is a US highway, a major corridor, a north-south corridor. So I really think it's kind of naive to think that eventually this whole corridor is not going to be mostly commercial. Give it another 10 years or so. So I think it's inevitable that, that this whole corridor will develop into a commercial corridor. I mean, eventually, you know, everything was residential, everything was agricultural, but this is a major corridor, and if you go north, you go up to the Walter Hill area, right around there, and you go just a little bit further south, what is it? It's commercial. Sure, we get into the, as we're right there, getting into the city of Murfreesboro, but I just wanted to make a point to that.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Kusch.
Thank you. First of all, I applaud Commissioner Baum in supporting his constituents. I will remind everybody that the Planning Commission unanimously, unanimously approved this for reasons that Mr. Roundtree and Commissioner Gurley just stated. This makes the most sense for this particular property, so thank you very much.
Any other discussion, or questions, or comments? All right, we do have a motion on the floor to approve this rezoning request. So in this particular case, since we've had a little bit of discussion, let's, please cast your votes, please.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, record the votes, please.
Sixteen yes, two no, one abstain.
Sixteen yes, two no, one abstain. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Next rezoning request, sixteen dash eight zero zero six. Commissioner P., please.
It does not record as abstain when a commissioner is not present at their desk. It is just absent, no, it's a no vote.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm just seeing that, Mr. Demosi, let's see, we have rezoning request sixteen eight zero zero six, on behalf of Mr. Thomas Holton, along the Shelbyville Pike. Existing zone is residential, low-density. Proposed zoning is heavy industrial, on approximately forty-three acres. Mr. Demosi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Shelbyville Pike. The applicant is proposing to rezone this property, as you stated, heavy industrial, to relocate his existing business along Cobb Road to this site. The applicant fabricates concrete pipes and other concrete items for construction projects. Since this proposed use does produce concrete for some of the products he makes, it does fall under a heavy industrial classification, which is why he's asking for the heavy industrial zoning. The applicant has requested that the entire property be rezoned, although they do not anticipate using the entire property, at least at this time. Access to the property would be from an existing shared drive, which is located along Shelbyville Pike. This site is immediately to the south of an existing concrete batch plant. That access drive also serves that property as well, as well as some property to the rear of that. Staff has asked the applicant to explore, explore the possibility of either working with the neighboring property to the south, or perhaps the neighbor to the north, to look at this and maybe possibly move a median cut. This isn't something that we would have to decide tonight if this is approved, but there is some potential there to possibly move one of the median cuts around if they work with T.DOT on that, to allow for easier access for larger truck traffic, for both his business and the business to the north as well. Our biggest concern really is just with the larger trucks leaving the site, and then having to turn back around and heading down to the south. But again, that's not something we have to decide tonight, that's just something that we have had some discussions with the applicant about. The proposed zoning will require a Type III buffer adjacent to residentially-zoned property. Buffers would not be required along the lines adjacent to industrially-zoned property. When you look at the zoning map, you'll see that there is, well, actually, it's more on the aerial map, you'll see some heavy industrial zoning, as well as some light industrial zoning. They wouldn't have to buffer that necessarily, but the remaining area around there, as far as the residentially-zoned property, they would have to do that. As far as discussion of the planning commission, there was some discussion regarding the drainage and runoff, and also potential dust from the proposed business. Our county engineer responded that there'd be, have to be a number of drainage basins on the property for stormwater quality purposes. After discussion, the planning commission did feel that the entire property should be rezoned. Originally, staff had recommended just looking at maybe half the property, but after discussion, it was decided by the planning commission that the whole property would make more sense, and after discussion, staff agreed with that as well. So the planning commission did recommend approval of this by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Want to have any questions on this with Mr. Demosi? All right, thank you then, sir. We'll now declare a public hearing open for anyone that wishes to speak for or against rezoning request sixteen dash eight zero zero six. Now is your opportunity to come forward and make your comments. So has anyone wished to speak regarding this particular request? I do not see anyone that wishes to speak, therefore, the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion? Commissioner Jernigan.
Make a motion to approve.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Turner. Now, are there any questions? There being no questions and no discussions, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? So that was unanimous. Mr. Demosi, rezoning request sixteen dash eight zero zero seven, on behalf of George and Regina Lanning, located 4657 Rucker Christiana Road. Existing zoning is residential, medium-density. Proposed zoning is planned unit development for a retreat event venue on about nineteen acres. So please give us some more information.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Rucker Christiana Road. The applicants are proposing to rezone their property for use as a retreat or event venue. You'll recall, last year, we had a lot of discussion on developing some regulations for these type of venues, and this really is the first application that you've seen come before you. So just, if you have questions about any of the specifics, just feel free to ask, I'll be more happy to try to go through some of those. There's an existing 2,400-square-foot structure on the property that will be used for weddings and other social events. You'll have a copy of the pattern book on your iPads that you can reference if you would like. And again, if you have specific questions, either myself or the applicant's representative can also help you with that. The pattern book doesn't specifically state the total number of events to be held each year, but they have indicated to staff that it would be greater than thirty events, which was the cutoff that we put into the regulations. Anything less than thirty and greater than ten acres could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Anything with either less than ten acres or greater than thirty events would have to come through this process, so, which is what they're proposing to do. Maximum capacity would be about a hundred people, but it could be increased if adequate fire protection can be provided. The applicants have been in close contact with our fire and code staff regarding the occupancy of the building, so they know what they can and can't do in regards to that. There will be one to two employees associated with the business. No overnight accommodations would be provided, and security and traffic management would be provided on a case-by-case basis. Of course, access to the property would be from Rucker Christiana Road. The conceptual plan in the pattern book call, shows an area for approximately a hundred and six parking spaces. There appears to be more than adequate space to handle those kinds of events on this property. Consistent with the regulations for retreats also, the areas do not have to be paved, but the applicant will need to work with staff to ensure that a appropriate drainage plan is in place to make sure that it doesn't become like a muddy or rutted area, but we don't foresee that being a real issue. Landscaping, plan developments are a little bit different in regards to landscaping. They're expected to, at a minimum, meet the landscape standards in our zoning ordinance. This is still going to be a single-family property. The owners are still going to live on the property. A strict application of the landscaping standards may not be appropriate in this case, but there is a lot of existing vegetation out there that can be used for buffering. There is some areas where they'll have to kind of beef it up a little bit, but the applicants are aware of that, and again, that really shouldn't be any real issue there. After discussion and the public hearing, there wasn't, if I recall, there weren't really many speakers at this for the public hearing. There were some questions from the planning commission regarding emergency vehicle access to the property, bathroom provisions, noise and lighting limitations, which are already built into the code, and also the parking lot material, but after discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner P.
Doug, you mentioned fire protection. Are we requiring sprinklers for these barns now?
My understanding with speaking with the fire chief is that the size of the building and the occupancy they're looking at wouldn't require sprinklers at this point. If they decided to try to go larger, or wanted to have more people, then they would have to sprinkle, but for, they're keeping the limits down, so they wouldn't have to do that.
You got a square footage that he's going by?
Right. The square footage in the, in the maximum occupancy, which I think they're, they're leaving at right about a hundred is what they're looking at.
And since it doesn't have that, are they required to have fire department personnel on the premises during an activity?
The fire chief did not recommend that to me, you know.
Any other questions of Mr. Demosi? Okay, if there are no more questions, then we will declare the public hearing open with respect to rezoning request sixteen dash eight zero zero seven. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak regarding this application now, is your opportunity to come forward. Does anyone wish to speak regarding this proposal? Mr., well, you can tell us, Mr. Roundtree, your name and address.
I'm Clyde Roundtree, Hudson Steel Engineering. Just wanted to kind of tell you about the evolution of this project, because I think it's significant to its approval. The Lannings had this, this barn built in their backyard, really for the purpose of their daughter's wedding, and, and they really had a great experience there. So that's kind of what it kind of evolved from, and as it turned into this, basically, it was a barn that became a venue, and as you notice in our county and all around the city, these things were popping up everywhere. So it's neat to know that they fit all the criteria, they're concerned with the zoning, and that Mr. Demosi, as you mentioned, it fits all the criteria. But I think it's a neat opportunity for Christiana to have something like this. I have friends that are trying to get married, and these are really sought-after venues. And the Lannings also have a restaurant business that they're part of, and they do a lot of catering, so they started seeing the need. They kept on going out to these facilities and saying, you know, kind of learning more about them. So it kind of evolved into the process of going, hey, we have a space available, can it turn into this piece of, you know, something that would be a real asset to the community? So they're good people, they're excited about the possibility of using it for, you know, being a service to the community, and as Doug mentioned, they're going to be living on the property, which is a, is a real good value, because that, that ensures that anything that happens on the property is well-observed and well-managed. So if you have any questions for me specifically, I'd be glad to answer them.
But then, thank you, sir. Does anyone else wishes to speak for or against this request? There does not appear to be anyone else that wishes to speak, therefore, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Jernigan.
Make a motion to approve.
And a second from Commissioner Cook. Any further discussion? All right, everyone in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous. Okay, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Demosi. Jernigan, I think we can continue with the Budget Committee's report.
Enter local agreement with City of Murfreesboro for software purchase and related budget amendment resolution. Whereas the Rutherford County, whereas Rutherford County Emergency Management Service and Rutherford County Sheriff's Office herein collectively called, referred to as county, and the City of Murfreesboro desire to enter into an inter-local agreement to facilitate county utilization of the CAD and INFORM mobile applications under City of Murfreesboro System Purchase Agreement with TRITech, to purchase for and share the costs associated with the ongoing maintenance of the application, and to provide a cooperative redundant computer-aided dispatch system between the county and City of Murfreesboro Public Safety Agencies at the cost contained therein. Therefore, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor, and all other appropriate officials be and are hereby authorized to enter into the inter-local agreement with the City of Murfreesboro, a copy of the same being attached here to at Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to facilitate the county utilization of the CAD and INFORM mobile applications under the City of Murfreesboro System Purchase Agreement with TRITech, to provide for and share the costs associated with the ongoing maintenance of the application, and to provide a cooperative redundant computer-aided dispatch system between the county and City of Murfreesboro Public Safety Agencies at the cost contained therein, and additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to provide funding for the costs contained therein. Increased expenditures, data processing equipment, four hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Decreased expenditures, gasoline, fifteen thousand dollars. Utilities, fifteen thousand dollars. And decreased unassigned fund balance, four hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Resolve this fourteenth day of April, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer, and Mr. Nipper, and others.
And I will point out, there's a grant from the 911 Board for two hundred and...
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
Two hundred and thirty thousand is going to come back, and that's going to come off that number, that'll be reimbursed to the county.
And I will remind, there were some, since the Budget Committee approved, recommended its budget amendment at the last meeting, we have determined that the amount they recommended to be funded out of unassigned fund balance could be reduced by twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, so we have made a reduction in the previous request. Mr. McAdoo.
I've got a question. What about our other city municipalities, Smyrna and Laverne? If they come up with an agreement, come with us, will we go into agreement with them to share the costs?
Was the question, what about Smyrna and Laverne, and are they willing to participate?
Right. Well, if they were in the future, would we be obligated to split the costs with them?
No.
From my memory of the meeting, Smyrna's already got this system, and we're going to be compatible with them. Well, but I think that's a spin real well, Mr. Frost, from the...
We can, but Smyrna is not, this is an inter-local agreement with Murfreesboro. Murfreesboro already has this same system, they've had it in place for years, so we're going to have a compatible system with Murfreesboro. Smyrna has their own system. There is no discussion about Smyrna or Laverne participating in this, this approach at this time. So we'll see, we may need Mr. Frost, but Mr. Gurley wants to say something first.
Yeah, I was just going to comment. This is an inter-local agreement between the City of Murfreesboro. The City of Murfreesboro already has this existing software. We're not paying for, the county is not paying for the City of Murfreesboro's utilization of this software. We're basically adding on to what they have at our cost. We are sharing some cost in the maintenance of this software, and in the implementation of the software as one cooperative body, because it's cheaper to do it that way than to do it on an individual basis. We could do our own thing, and it would cost us more. The software, I'm fairly familiar with the software. It's, it's been used by several entities, and if you read what was furnished to us, multiple entities throughout the state, and this software is easily adaptable to anyone. However, right now, the City of Laverne, the City of Smyrna, use a different software, but what's hopeful in the future, it's my goal, it's something I've pushed for a long, long before I came on the commission, and that's us be able to, to go in and utilize some interfaces and so on, so that we can share that real-time data between all the entities to know what is going on at each place. In other words, if a bomb robbery occurs in Laverne, it's coming into Smyrna, it'd be nice if Smyrna knew it right up front, as the dispatcher in Laverne is entering that information. It'd also be nice if the county knew it, because they might take a different direction, and it'd be nice if Highway Patrol knew it, too. And there have been some things in times past, and a few years ago, that was funded through Homeland Security to do this, but it was very, very expensive, and it was dropped. But this gives us a good start as a county and municipalities to develop a seamless system of dispatch of emergency services.
Other, other questions? Commissioner P.
I'd voted against this in budget, and I don't disagree that it's something that's needed. However, what I disagree with is the timing on this. You know, we're fixing to come up with our New Year's budget in just another month or two, and I feel like, you know, this agreement could probably wait till after that. And two, I'm sure I'll have to remind most of you, we've still got a real bad taste in our mouth about some software we tried to purchase here a year or two ago, and at that time, when we reviewed it, wiping the egg off our face, we all said, well, we're going to have all the software that we purchase in the future reviewed by IT people, and I haven't heard a review from our IT people on this one. So I just want to remind you guys of that.
Mr. P., in response to your question the other night, I did engage Mr. Robertson and at least a couple of his folks, and they've had at least two or more extended discussions regarding this, so I would, if it's okay, I'd let Mr. Robertson sort of summarize their review of this, and if that would be appropriate.
Sure. We've been brought up to speed just since Monday afternoon, so any of my comments, I would caveat with the notion that this was a cursory review that we did. However, we have had very good discussions with Sheriff's Office IT personnel, and with Mr. Bill Terry, with the Murfreesboro Police Department, who I see is present here tonight. This proposal, from an IT standpoint, I feel has a high degree of likelihood for success. It's got some very strong points going for it, not the least of which is that it's fully operational in an office of a similar, in a dispatch center of a similar size, a block and a half from here. The network and hardware proposal that is being put in place will be very redundant. We'll have, they will be able to achieve a level of redundancy and disaster preparedness that frankly, they don't, they aren't able to achieve right now with, with all of the equipment currently being on-site. So certainly, from a continuity of operations standpoint, it's a strong plan, and from a hardware standpoint... And from a hardware standpoint, it's a strong plan. My guys talked with Mr. Frost this afternoon about that, and we felt very good about that. And again, the level of redundancy between the Sheriff's Office and the Murfreesboro Police Department is excellent. They're going to completely mirror each other from one of those departments to the other. Certainly, staff adoption will be important. We know that local dispatchers are very pleased with this, and these, our dispatchers have been able to, the sheriff's dispatchers have been able to look at this software. So in terms of barriers to adoption, I think that is relatively low, relatively favorable. I think that's mostly what I intended to say. This is not a situation where we will be creating software. It is highly customizable, from what we've seen. But if they use the software as it is designed to be used, this is a strong company with many, many accounts in the state of Tennessee and similarly sized dispatch offices. And if they use it as it's designed, which I certainly think they intend to do, I feel very favorable about the likelihood of success for this. Be glad to answer any other questions you might have.
Well, I hadn't heard anything about the annual fee cost. And two, this is the first step of a three-step solution. I don't know if the rest of the commissioners know about that. So you're looking at another, I believe the number kicked out was around 700,000 for the next step. Is that correct? I'm not sure about the figures. What's the figures on the next two phases that they're wanting? And when are we looking at implementing that? Are we talking about as early as next year or next budget?
I think their best estimate on installing this would be December of this particular year. So I don't, personally, I don't think we're in a position to really fund this Phase Two or Phase Three in the coming fiscal year. I think it's going to be after that unless, and they are taking some opportunity to review the availability of some grants that might be there. If that were to happen, then we could revisit that discussion. But Phase Two is 700,000 plus. Phase Three is 500,000 approximately. And, well, the maintenance on this particular system is $51,000 per year. And what we're funding here tonight would include the first year's maintenance, then that would, there would be no additional cost beyond what's in this budget amendment until the second year. And please note that this is more than just many, many installations in Tennessee. This is a national product. So they're not going to be creating a device, a set of software. It is there, it's running, and Murfreesboro's used it for any number of years now.
Did we check with Murfreesboro to see if this agreement would still be okay if we waited for another month or two to get this in under the New Year's budget?
I don't think we have a clear answer on that. I mean, these numbers came from the company that TRITech that they're proposing to buy this from, so I don't know if it's time-dependent or not, quite honestly. But... Other questions? If you don't have any more questions, then we apparently are ready to vote. So we have a motion on the floor to accept this inter-local agreement and to, for the budget amendment as well. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, 1 no. Motion passes.
I'm N1G. Singer Road Property Purchase and Related Budget Amendment Resolution. Whereas approximately one acre of property located at 4517 Singer Road, Murfreesboro, has been offered for sale, and whereas the subject property adjoins land owned by Rutherford County and could be used as a means of ingress and egress to the county-owned property. Whereas an offer of $77,000 has been made for the property, subject to a negative finding of a Phase One environmental study, approval by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, and 60-day closing period after Rutherford County Board of Commissioners' approval. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 4517 Singer Road, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, upon a negative finding of a Phase One environmental study and a 60-day closing period after purchase approval. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to provide funding for the purchase. Increased expenditures, land, $77,000. Increased revenue, development tax, $77,000. Resolved this 14th day of April 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second from Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner P there. Anyone have a question? And Commissioner Allen?
Here at the budget meeting, there was a tract of land. We were going to try to determine what it was and if it is worth acquiring as well. It was a lot of the road frontage that was parallel to this property.
Yes, ma'am. I retrieved from the Register of Deeds office a copy of the current deed and the deed description, property description. It's pretty much an exact rectangle, even though it's not a 100%. So I don't know why that little divot that you might say is taken out there on the property assessor's map, but the deed discloses a rectangle that's almost perfect, okay? All right, any other questions or discussion? We do have a motion to approve this purchase, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Mr. Jernigan, have you voted, please? Now, everyone has voted, I believe, so record the votes, please.
20 yes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Gurley, excuse me.
Yes, I'd just like to remind the audience that this is National Telecommunicator Week, and I don't know of any better present that we could present to our telecommunications who does such a good job protecting us each day than to give them something to make their lives easier. And I think we just did that with the approval of the new CAD system. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that comment, sir. All right, we don't have a report from our Health and Education Committee, no report from Property Management, and no report from Public Safety. There is one resolution from our Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee has a resolution here. Says, whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easement. Attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the Planning Department. Whereas the Planning Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of planted drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Commissioners that the county commission approves as additional public drainage easements, the attached list Exhibit One is submitted by the Planning Department in accordance with Tennessee Code designated 54-903 and 54-904. These public drainage easements, in addition to those previously approved, shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department, resolved this 14th day of April 2016. I so move.
And a second, Commissioner Piercy. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. Is there a reason why these easements and drainage things aren't on the consent agenda each month?
That's a good question. I hadn't thought about that question. About the only thing we've been putting on there is largely budget kinds of things, but certainly, if there's no objection, I will consider those things in the future for being placed on a consent agenda. I think that's a good catch. All right, did we have, we did get a motion, yes. All right, everyone in favor of that, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. Okay. Commissioner Gooch, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The following resolution is too important to put on the consent agenda. Steering does have a resolution that would add, authorize a much-needed fourth General Sessions Judge. Whereas, Mr. Chair, the General Assembly proposes to enact an act to amend Chapter 384 of the Private Acts of 1947 as amended by Private, Chapter 118 of the Private Acts of 1973 and Chapter 59 of the Private Acts of 2005, and any other acts aminitory thereto relative to the General Sessions Court of Rutherford County, specifically adding a fourth General Session Judge with support personnel and assistant district attorney and assistant public defender. And whereas a two-thirds vote of the legislative body is required with certification of same to the Secretary of State, and whereas a copy of this act is attached hereto and incorporated herein. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County that the Act to amend Chapter 384 of the Private Acts of 1947 as amended by Chapter 118 of the Private Acts of 1973 and Chapter 59 of the Private Acts of 2005, and any other acts aminitory thereto relative to the General Sessions Court of Rutherford County, specifically adding a fourth General Session Judge with support personnel and assistant district attorney and assistant public defender, private chapter number, which will be announced, House Bill Number 2647, Private Acts of 2016, be and said same hereby is adopted by Rutherford County, Tennessee. It is further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a certified copy of this action to the Secretary of State for the state of Tennessee, resolved this the 14th day of April 2016. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McAdoo and others, anyone have any discussion or questions? Okay, then. All of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? That was unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Gooch. Okay, let's see. Before we go into any other, I'm going to, as a matter of just privilege of a chair, Mr. Jordan, if you would join me at the podium here just a moment, and let's do this a little bit more official this time. A lot of our department heads and leaders don't get enough recognition, but I just want to take a special opportunity to, again, how many years have we gotten this now, Ms. Nolan?
Gosh, 20.
20 years. Our finance department has gotten the highest level of, you might say, achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So I have a letter here that came from our Comptroller's Office and...
GFOA.
GFOA, excuse me, the Government Finance Officers Association. But in other words, she had to do all this work for the Comptroller's Office in such a way that they would recognize it. But again, Ms. Nolan and her team of people there in her office have been, received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting again and again and again for 20 years. So I just think they deserve some real public recognition, and we just want to say how proud we are and what of a wonderful S as it is to have competent, capable people that are providing accurate, complete data on a timely basis. So thank you very much, Ms. Nolan.
I owe it all to my staff. Definitely, I'll tell you what. You should be very, very proud of your finance department staff. There's 14 hard-working folks that work every day, that come and do the business. You know, we kind of, everybody else has to deal with the public, and we deal, you know, take care of our department, so that is our contribution.
The last 20 years, they've received a plaque. Due to budget cuts, this year they received a piece of paper.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, any other business? Commissioner P, then Commissioner Schaefer?
Just wanted to mention, this Saturday, April 16th, the Ketchum Volunteer Fire Department will be having a Country Hand Breakfast from 6:00 to 10:00, and I'd like to invite everyone out. Thanks.
And Commissioner Schaefer?
This isn't about a Country Hand Breakfast, but I would request that we suspend the rules. The sheriff talked to me earlier, and he would like to say a few words to the commission.
Without objection, we'll suspend the rules, but if Mr. Sheriff will be just as brief with we've been on this last discussion, we will allow it to happen. Mr. Sheriff, are you in the neighborhood? All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you to each and every one of y'all tonight. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to you all as the commission. Thank you to Jeff Davidson, deputy to the mayor. Thank you to the 911 board. Thank you to Brian Robertson and the County OIT Department, Bill Terry and the Murfreesboro Police Department, EMA, for all their help and assistance, but also the Sheriff's Office IT Department. Because without all of these people, this CAD system has been a vision of mine since I took office in 2010. And we've been working very hard and very diligently on it since 2010 in trying to push and get this through. And tonight, we changed history in Rutherford County, the way that we are going to communicate and the way that our county is going to operate when it comes to communication, the judicial system. Now with the county probation system, once we get all three of these pieces in place, it's going to help with everything that we do judicial-wise. So I just, real quick, wanted to come and say thank you, and just know that tonight, you made history for Rutherford County. Thank you all.
Anyone else have any other business? Thank you very much. We are adjourned.